I'd like to call to order the Thursday, October 7, 2021 special meeting, public work session of the Portsmouth City School Board. I ask if we please stand at this moment for a moment of silence, followed by the pledge of allegiance by Mr. Parent. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, maybe see it.
The mission of the Portsmouth Public School Division is to engage all students in learning that will foster academic excellence and responsible citizenship.
Thank you so much. Agenda item 2.5, attendance, roll call, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Atkinson?
Here.
Mrs. Hines?
Here.
Mr. Parent?
Here.
Mrs. Thomas?
Mr. Tillage?
Here.
Dr. Whitaker?
Here.
This is Dr. Patillo?
Here.
Six members present, three members absent.
Thank you so much. Agenda item 2.6, approval of the agenda file, October 7, 2021. I entertain a motion at this time.
Move for approval.
Second?
Motion made by Mr. Parent, second by Vice Chair Atkinson. Any discussion?
I do have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Chair, that compensation review, was that specifically for a group of people?
Yes, that would be geared towards, the board wanted information for bus drivers and school nurses.
Okay, thank you.
No problem. Any other discussion? CNN roll call vote, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Atkinson?
Yes.
Mrs. Hines?
Yes.
Mr. Parent?
Yes.
Mr. Tillage?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Dr. Patillo?
Yes.
It's unanimous.
Thank you so much. Agenda item 3.1 is our closed session. I ask if our Vice Chair can lead us to a closed session at this time.
I move that the board enter into a closed meeting under the provisions of section 2.2-3711 of the Code of Virginia for the following purposes: consultation with legal counsel concerning a legal matter requiring the advice by such counsel as permitted under subsection 8.8, and consideration of various personnel matters, including the assignment, performance, and resignation of specific school employees as permitted under subsection 1.
Motion made by Vice Chair Atkinson, who will have a second. Second by Mr. Tillage. Is there any discussion? CNN roll call vote, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Atkinson?
Yes.
Mrs. Hines?
Yes.
Mr. Parent?
Yes.
Mr. Tillage?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Dr. Patillo?
Yes.
It's unanimous.
Thank you so much. We're not intending to close meeting at this time. USI Assurance Services 2022, the health plan costs, and we have our consultants from USI here with us today. And I'll let Mr. Falk introduce.
Yes, we have Will Wellman Flick and Mike Robson from USI here with us to give a presentation on our health plan costs for 2022.
This is the grade they're supposed to be in, but they're putting them back in grade because they missed so many days last year. They went to some school. So she wants them in there.
All right, everyone. Good evening, everyone. My name is Gwen Wellman Flick, and I am with USI Insurance Services. We are the employee benefits consultant for Portsmouth Public Schools. Joining me tonight is my colleague, Michael Washington. And tonight, we will be providing an overview of your 2022 health plan cost and plan information for the 2022 plan year. So in terms of a brief background, first of all, Portsmouth Public Schools currently utilizes Optima Health to administer its medical program and to provide pharmacy benefits. So during the 2019 plan year, there was an extensive procurement process performed, in which case Optima Health was selected as a vendor. So 2022 will be the third year of that contract with Optima Health. The medical program is self-funded. That self-funding does include an excess loss insurance contract, or in other words, stop-loss or reinsurance. That is also through Optima Health. What that stop-loss contract ultimately does is provides protection for the school system against large claims. So the school system currently provides its employees with a choice of three plan options. That is to provide for a variety of options for employees to choose from that do meet the needs, the best for themselves and their families. Those three options are a health maintenance, or HMO plan, a point-of-service, or POS plan, and also a high deductible health plan that is paired with a health savings account, or HSA. In terms of the enrollment, 53% of employees are currently enrolled in the POS plan. There are 38% enrolled in the HMO plan, and 10% are enrolled in the high deductible health plan that is paired with the HSA. So pretty good split between the POS and HMO plans. Slightly favorable, more higher participation in the POS plan, which is largely attributed to lower-cost employee premiums for that particular plan design. Moving into important renewal considerations. First off, we do look at overall demographic changes. So from August 2022 to July 2021, average employee enrollment did decrease by negative 0.2%. So ultimately, you'll see that enrollment has remained relatively consistent year over year. Next, you'll see that paid medical and pharmacy claims have increased 22.7% year over year. So that's looking from the prior review period to the current review period through July. So that increase was 15 million to 18.4 million. That's nothing that's really unusual for us to see at this point. We did see a pretty significant decline in claims at the start of the pandemic, largely attributed to employees either avoiding care, so not seeking care, or delaying elective procedures. So that's a major reason why we saw a decline in the prior year. So really, the increase to this year is more or less just stabilizing the claims and getting back to a normal level. So net costs to include fixed costs, which are administrative fees and staff loss fees, have increased 19.8% per employee per year. Your pharmacy costs currently represent 23.2% of total claims paid. So the average or normal range that we typically see is between 18 and 25%. So that 23.2% is in the average range of what we normally see for pharmacy as a representation of total claims. Also, there were three claims in excess of the $400,000 specific stop-loss level compared to one in the prior year. However, that is typically what we see normally with an employer of the school system size. We will see about two to three claimants exceeding that specific stop-loss level. So moving into the next slide, you'll see high-cost claimants over $100,000 increased from 3.9 million to 5.7 million. That did represent a 46% increase. However, if we're looking at the prior year, so two years prior, at that point, high-cost claimants over $100,000 represented about 6.2 million. So again, we saw a pretty significant decline last year, largely related to the pandemic, employees not seeking care. So really, we're just kind of getting back to that normal, normal pre-pandemic level. So current high-dollar claimants represent 30.9% of total paid claims. Typically, we see that in the range of 20 to 35%. So you are within that range. Current national medical industry trend is 7.4% for medical expenditures and 10% for pharmacy costs. So that is a blended composite trend of 8%. So that being said, national trend, really the average in which health insurance expenditures increase over year, that is 8% on average. And then again, just to reiterate, early-stage avoidance of care during the initial phases of the COVID-19 pandemic is really a primary driver of increased utilization during the current plan year. So COVID-19 diagnosed cases totaled 541,000. That's looking at the timeframe from May 2020 to July 2021. There were 156 confirmed COVID cases, which did represent 6% of total membership. Typically, as a percentage of total membership, we do see that in about the 5% to 7% range. So the 6% is pretty much what we've been seeing on average across all organizations. All right, so looking at plan cost projection for 2022. So for a continuation of the current plan provisions and contribution strategy, so meaning no changes to employee plan designs, no changes to employee premiums, it does represent a 9% increase over 2021 budget. So that's a $1.6 million annual increase from 18 million to 19.6 million. Just to kind of give a historical overview for the current 2021 plan year, the projected cost change for this current 2021 plan year was a 3.8% decrease. So we've been tracking your claims for this plan year. Actual plan year to date, so January through July of 2021, is running at 100.6% net to budget. So pretty much right on target to where the projection was coming in for this year. If we look at the year prior, the overall increase was 3.9%. So if we average these three years, you've been averaging a 3% per year over the prior three-year period, which is well below that national trend of 8%. So this is the 2021 to 2022 benefits overview, really just looking at all of the plan components for the three plans, the HSA plan, the POS plan, and the HMO plan. So note that plan design offerings have remained unchanged for three years in a row. In addition to that, the school system does also contribute $1,000 annually into employees' health savings accounts to encourage participation in the HSA. In addition to that, we've had educational sessions with employees. We actually met with all employees in 2018. And then beyond that, we also do have digital videos available to employees and continue to educate employees about that option during open enrollment. Next, looking at employee payroll contributions, you'll see proposing from 2021 to 2022, no change in employee rates. And to supplement that, employee payroll deductions have remained unchanged for four years in a row. So no plan changes for three years in a row and no rate changes for four years in a row. All right, now highlighting employee education. Really, the goal is to appeal to a multi-generational workforce. So we're utilizing a variety of options to generate, to educate employees. Currently, PPS utilizes EFP, or Employee Family Protection, to educate and enroll employees in their benefit offerings. They actually provide one-on-one, customized enrollment experiences to educate and inform employees of their benefit options. They're able to utilize a call center and also online enrollment options, so a variety of different ways that they're able to enroll and engage with those counselors. In addition to that, employees do receive a customized employee benefits guide, also a prerecorded open enrollment video presentation that they can access 24/7, also a customized benefits website and mobile app, and then also a high-deductible health plan and HSA educational presentation to educate them on that plan option as well. And lastly, just looking at some of the wellness initiatives that the school system offers to employees. So if employees are enrolled in the HSA plan, they do have what's called a preventive RX rider. So what that does is it provides for no-cost medications to employees for preventive medications, such as those treating high blood pressure and high cholesterol. There's also disease management programs related to diabetes management, respiratory conditions, cardiovascular disease, and pregnancy, which does provide for a $200 healthcare incentive and also no-cost medications related to the condition. So that does help employees not only manage their conditions, but also decreases the chance that they will become a high-cost claimant in the future. And then lastly, there's a pre-diabetes educational program through OMADA. 90 employees have enrolled in that program since the 2019 implementation of that program, with a total of 585.3 pounds lost. So that program really is encouraging our employees to participate, lose weight, and with the goal, of course, for them to not develop diabetes, which does improve their overall, overall health. All right, and I realize that was a lot of information in a few slides. So at this point, I'd like to open it up to see what questions you may have.
Yeah, I read this out one question. Just want to reiterate, there is no change in women preventative care, correct? As far as the benefits for that?
That is correct.
Okay. Any other questions from board members?
No, just glad, just glad to see that it's 9% and it could, it could have been higher. And that's a, I mean, we think that 9% is high, but compared to other organizations that have more employees, this could have been a lot higher, given the number of cases and half a million dollars spent on COVID. So we're very, I mean, I'm, as a board member, very pleased that, to see that. I know it's an increase. We don't like to see increase, do we, Dr. Bracy?
No.
Or Mr. Falk? We don't like to see that, but it's interesting to see the number of people that are, I mean, 38% are in the HMO, which I thought would be just the opposite with the point-of-service, because isn't the point-of-service cost, cost more? Is it more costly?
The point-of-service has lower payroll deductions, but a higher deductible.
Okay.
All right, well, thank you so much again for coming, as always.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Have a great evening.
Carda, I just would like to say that I'm glad we can keep everything the same, excuse me, and actually keep that 5% increase, or the 4% increase that we gave our staff, you know, keep that in their pocket as well, because there's been years where raises have been given and health insurance goes up and you're actually bringing home less. So I'm glad that, you know, together, Mr. Falk and the insurance companies have averaged and managed and made sure that we're in a good spot to keep our employees in a good spot. So that's positive.
Thank you so much. Agenda item 3.3, division-wide vacancies. I believe that'd be Ms. Dorn.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I am going to report to you our number of vacancies that we have for teachers currently. We have 41 classroom teacher vacancies. Still, a lot of our positions have been able to be filled with long-term substitutes, but there are situations where we have had employees who have been stepping into the gap. And I wanted to certainly publicly thank them for doing so to support our children and students of Portsmouth Public School. Did you want me to comment on the other categories as well?
Other vacancies, you all?
Yes.
Yes.
Certainly. We have still 28 bus driver vacancies. And we have four nurse vacancies as well. So those are the, the large positions, number of positions that we are still seeking. We have, you know, one-offs for the other support kind of positions, but those are the largest numbers that we have.
Thank you so much. Vice Chair Atkinson and Mr. Parent.
Thank you, Chair. Ms. Dorn? With the nurse vacancies, so is it like, it's not like a substitute nurse? There is completely no nurse in the school?
It's not, there's not a substitute nurse there. There are medical designees at each building, so staff members that have been trained to perform some medical services in the case of an emergency, but there's not a substitute nurse that is there. And they are also receiving support from the existing nurses, splitting their time, going between their regular location and the place where there's a vacancy.
So the split of time is allowing for, if a student needs medication, that nurse is able to administer the medication?
They should be, yes, they should be there to administer the medication.
Okay, but so far, we haven't had any issues with any students as far as?
I can't.
I'm just saying, with, with the nurses not on site and hypothetically, a child needs to take their medication in the morning and there's not a nurse there to administer, but we haven't, we haven't ran into that issue?
I wouldn't know that. I wouldn't have an issue about that. I wouldn't know that. I can't answer that completely.
Have we looked into outsourcing for the nurses?
Yes, ma'am, we have. And I believe that we touched on this last time. And the cost of contract, the nurses, was very high.
Yeah, I remember.
I believe that the board wanted to maybe discuss compensation, and that was part of why we were having such a hard time filling our vacancies, because we interviewed people, we offered them jobs, but when we get to the compensation part, that's where we lose them.
That was Mr. Parent and then Ms. Thomas.
I just want to go on record, as we discussed at HR meeting, that for parents and people that are listening, that we do not hire high school graduates to be substitutes. That was out, and I had to squish that because the bottom line is that in order to be a substitute, you have to have at least 30 hours. So I don't want the public to think that because we have a shortage of teachers that we're hiring high school graduates to fill those situations. So I just put that out there.
Thank you, sir. And Ms. Thomas?
Clarify. Yep, two questions. For the classroom vacancies, Ms. Dorn, do you have a breakdown of where they are? Are there any core subject courses that we're missing? Like, teaching vacancies?
There are, and you will see that in your report for next week.
Okay.
We'll have a breakdown by location, yes, ma'am.
Okay, and then to, hold on, there's a question. Vice Chair Atkinson asked about, have we had any issues with students receiving medicine? I don't know about an issue with students receiving medicine, but I do know about an issue where a student was injured coming off of a bus, and there was no nurse at that school. The teacher, or there was a staff member designated to assist, but it was pretty serious, more serious than the student realized. And so those nurse vacancies, I would say, are almost very critical.
Ms. Thomas, we shouldn't talk about a specific medical issue for her.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I will get it, y'all.
Have we reduced the number of vacancies for the nurses? Because I thought it was higher.
It was higher, but we were able to find money to contract with two, for two nurses. Yes, ma'am, but the cost for that prevents us from hiring more through that contract service.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Hines?
Is there not a company that we could, that we could contract with to provide nurses for us? Not a hiring service, but say, and I'm just going to use Bon Secours because they're right up the street, but can we not partner with Bon Secours and hire them to provide us nurses? Like you would outsource custodials?
We can certainly look into that. However, there's shortages everywhere for everything.
I, I mean, I know.
They get them first.
Yeah, they get them first.
A lot more than we can afford to.
Okay.
But that's a great idea.
Do you have any more questions in reference to 3.3?
I just, thank you, Chair. I know that we are in a shortage. I, I just don't want us to, down the line, face any legal issues for that. So what's the, I guess, either we, as a board, would have to come out of our pockets for outsourcing service or face legal action from a situation in a school. And I guess that's one thing that we would have to figure out what we want to do as a board as far as like with the nursing situation. But I mean, we have to come up with a plan.
Are we just telling Dr. Brayce? Are you letting him know?
I'm, I can't hear you over the mic.
No, I said, are you letting Dr. Brayce?
No, I'm, I'm saying, as, as a board, we, we have to, I mean, I know that's Dr. Bracy's job, and, but as a board, you know, we have to let him know, like what we want to see or what we want to do as far as like these positions. We, we can't keep sitting on it. We have to make a direct report.
Thank you.
To that point, the staffing service that you use to get those two nurses, do they have any other nurses that are available to come work for us immediately if we could find the funds?
I believe that they would. Of course, we haven't spoken to them in a couple of weeks since we originally contacted them about contracting. So I can't say for sure, but I would think that they could find some nurses.
So would it be that we ask Dr. Bracy and staff to see if they can find funds for two more nurses to help cover those vacancies and relieve some of the shift work that our nurses are doing to cover schools? I mean, they know the dollar amount. They're going to have to go through the budget and find it. It's not?
I just know we need to do something.
Dr. Whitaker?
When we had this discussion at the last meeting, I believe I asked whether the American Recovery Funds can cover the nursing costs. Did we ever get any clarification on that?
Yeah, in, in the case of nurses, I believe we probably could write that into the grant. That would require amendments to do so, but we'd have to get approval. But yes, I think that probably would fall in line with health and safety under those grant proposal and those provisions. So, yes, ma'am.
I mean, can't we just do that? Because it's, it's an emergency situation.
Do we need consensus of the board to do that?
That's, that's what I was saying.
No. If, if, if Mr. Falk could, I believe they're coming back at our work session with a breakdown of our grant funding and the uses of the grant. And that can be included in that breakdown for us to be able to allow them to write those amendments to be approved, to actually do that. We would just have to make sure we still keep in mind that those would be just for one-time requests. So we would still need to find the funds and the budget for a continuous process on hiring nurses and all of that.
So how many did you say we need?
Four.
So we could possibly take it out of the American?
Any more questions for agenda item 3.3?
Yeah, if we're looking at the four, should we also look at adding the two current contractors to, to come from those funds as well?
We can look at all possibilities and decide how to give you a?
Were any more questions for agenda item 3.3? Agenda item 3.4, compensation review.
The board asked at our last meeting for us to do a survey of our surrounding divisions to get information about who, how our salaries compare for our neighbors, for bus drivers as well as nurses. And as I indicated when we were speaking, we are the lowest paying in both categories for bus drivers and nurses. For bus drivers, the school division that is next to us regarding starting pay, they are approximately 5% higher with their hourly rate than what, where we are. And for nurses, the school division that is closest to us in salary for beginning salary for nurses is approximately 3.19% higher than where our salary starts. for beginning salary for nurses is approximately 3.19% higher than where our salary starts. And that was a survey that was conducted with all seven cities with the public schools. No private. I did not consider private employers when I did the survey.
And we did, as a board, we realized that we wanted to do this compensation study with the rest of the region to see where we set with our compensation for bus drivers and nurses. Our finance committee, they have met and they're continuing to work out a possible solution to how we can bring our bus drivers and nurses to a competitive salary with the rest of the region. Right now, we're in the middle of our current fiscal year, but we're about to go into budget season very shortly for our next fiscal year. And our top priority is make sure we bring our nurses and drivers up to a competitive salary. So I don't want our staff thinking that they've been forgotten. This is a board priority and we have been on top of staff to figure out how we can do it. And we will do it and we will work it out. And they're working on that plan for us now. And as soon as we get that rolled out, we'll let the public know as well. But that is our priority to make sure our staff is properly compensated. And we're going to continue that as being one of our board priorities as we've done for the last 10 years as far as salary increases. So I'll now open the floor for board members to have any questions for Ms. Doran.
Thank you Chair. Ms. Doran, was the increase in minimum wage effective?
January 1st.
I guess, is, is that in the budget? Do we have many employees under that, that minimum wage gap?
We don't have many, but I have been in talk with finance about how many employees will be affected by that. Mr. Falk can probably tell us how much or approximately how much it will cost us to make that increase in January.
Yes ma'am.
Okay.
Yeah, we talked about that.
Yeah, well, certainly. But you don't, do you have the number?
I do not.
Okay. If memory serves me correctly, there's about 250 employees who will be affected by that increase to minimum, minimum wage of $11. And the size this January, it's scheduled to increase in the next January.
And then the next?
So we, yes, we've looked at each year.
So it's, it's, it is going to be effective in their paychecks January 1st?
Yes ma'am, that would be the law. Yes, that would be the law.
Yeah, we got to fund it. So now we, so now we have to fund?
Funds.
Funds to make sure that we're covered in that area?
Well, and with, and with that being said, I believe as board members, we should also realize that it is our responsibility to talk to our legislators. When they create these laws and policies, that they can't come to us empty-handed. So if you're going to increase minimum wage incrementally for the next three years, there should be an increase in your appropriation to school divisions to do that. We're not, we're not a taxing authority, so we can't do anything to make our own money. So if that's going to happen, they need to step up to the plate to make sure we get what we need to increase those salaries as well. So I think that's our responsibility as well to talk to our representatives to make sure they, they stop giving us these empty mandates. All right, were there any other questions for Ms. Doran? Thank you. So Mr. Falk, I guess you all are going to meet again as far as the finance committee. And maybe you can flush out some raw numbers as far as what the cost will be to increase the salaries for our bus drivers and for our nurses. And of course, as a board, we're always looking to increase overall staff pay for the next fiscal year as well. So thank you. Agenda item 3.5, the vaccination process. And for students, staff, for staff and students in extracurricular activities. And we have our very capable representative from the Health Department. I'll let Dr. Bracy introduce her at this time.
Oh, sure. We are pleased to have our local epidemiologist, Ms. Michelle Wentz, here with us tonight. And Ms. Wentz has been working very closely with the school division to provide guidance to us whenever we've had cases of COVID exposure or incidences where we've had staff and students that are tested positive.
So I lead our COVID containment team, care enforcement. So I just wanted to talk first about where we are with COVID enforcement right now. So this takes a look over the last 90 days. You can see in the last eight weeks, we've been on the surge. We are approximately seeing around 40 days as a day care enforcement. And our public safety rate is up to 13%. Anywhere above special circumstances, we're highly transmission. So just taking a look at the past month and four months, in terms of our school children, mothers, and subjects, we have seen 304 cases of school each year in this year enforcement. And that takes up about a fourth of our COVID cases. And then we broke them down further by age groups, between our elementary aged kids, 5 till 11. We saw 137 cases. And that middle school aged 12 to 15, we saw 95 cases. And that 16 to 18, we saw 15 cases. Okay, so our primary prevention measure for COVID is vaccination. So taking a look at what vaccination looks like enforcement right now. Those who are eligible, those 12 years and older, we have about 50% who are fully vaccinated at this point. Our greatest age range that's fully vaccinated is by plus population. And they have about 75% of that population vaccinated. So the biggest news in vaccine has been the Pfizer vaccine booster. And there are different available to those who are 65 years or older, those who are older than 18 and live among Trump care settings, those who have underlying medical conditions, for those who work or live in higher risk settings. October 14th and 15th, the FDA is going to discuss booster doses of Moderna and the J.J. vaccine. And the big one that we've all been waiting for is October 26th. Where the FDA will need to discuss approval of the 50% of the 11-year-olds. And we're actually training that and we're hoping that in November, we'll be able to start vaccinating for that age range. All right, so taking a look at what isolation and quarantine guidelines are for the students at sports and public schools. When you have a case, somebody who is actually sick with COVID, recommendation is that they stay home for 10 days. If their symptoms start on day zero, they stay home for 10 days. And then they return to school on 11 days. You do not have to test negative to come back to school. If that test can stay positive for a while, so it's really just looking at those 10 days. For our quarantine of our contacts, those who are fully vaccinated, we recommend no quarantine. But we do recommend that they go ahead and get tested three to five days after exposure. We also recommend that they have no symptoms. So if they start having any symptoms, they should stay home and get tested right away. Because we do see some breakthrough cases. If you've had previous history of COVID in the last 90 days, we also do not have to quarantine. But for those who are not vaccinated, for those who are not fully vaccinated, unless they have no history of disease, we recommend a 10-day quarantine. And they should have no symptoms during that time. If a contact is a household member rather than a school exposure, their quarantine can be longer. It could be up to 24 days. And we'll work with the individual households and with them while testing. Any questions on that part? All right, you can go ahead. Thank you. All right, so just a brief overview of who is a contact in a school setting. Those students who are less than three feet between students. Regardless of whether they're wearing a mask, they are considered a close contact. For those who are between three to six feet, if they are both wearing a mask, they are not considered close contacts, therefore will not have to quarantine. Any distance greater than six feet, regardless of mask-wearing, they will not be considered a contact and they will not have to quarantine. The same exception can be applied to school buses as long as there are documented seating charts. And we can acknowledge that students were wearing masks while on the bus. It does not apply to teachers, staff, or adults. All right, so here's some general guidance that we've given as far as when there is a case in your school. Our first ask is to gather information. The school's point of contact should fill out our confidential reporting tool or reach out to the school epidemiologist with the case information. We're going to ask information such as the name of the student, date of birth, the date that they attended, the names of the teachers. We're going to ask for seating charts of classrooms, buses, or lunch tables. All charts should include approximate distances from desks or spaces or seats so we can determine that three to six feet range. We'll also ask about extracurricular activities. The next step is for that school to confirm the case results. We want to make sure that the person who's reporting it actually did test positive for COVID. Sometimes they get confused with other tests. And then we'll determine the exclusion criteria for the case in the contacts. The next step is for the school to start making the initial notification to contacts. This is where they can notify families who they've identified as close contacts as soon as possible. It's just a general notification to keep their child home and to let them know the Health Department will be reaching out within 24 hours to do the contact tracing. Again, also you have the Department of Labor and Industry law that requires employers to notify all employees within 24 hours of potential exposure. And that's any case within the building. And then the general notification to families. This can be limited to the affected classroom or bus, or it can be sent school-wide, that is your decision. And then the weekly updates that you make on our dashboard. So the next steps is for the Portsmouth Health Department to do the contact tracing. We're going to reach out to all identified contacts within 24 hours of notification. We're going to be asking them questions about their vaccination status, their previous history of disease to determine if quarantine is recommended. We will enroll them in daily symptom monitoring. We are going to assist contacts in finding a testing location. And we'll determine if families need wraparound services for quarantine such as food. We have a care resource coordinator in Portsmouth and she helps these families when they need help. So our school epidemiologist will send a list of students and staff who need to quarantine back to the school and then include on that the return date. All right, so when we are looking at measures of prevention that we ask schools to take, we look at both evaluating the level of community transmission as well as the level of impact to the school. So right now, as I said, we're in high transmission. We have seen 290 cases in the last seven days and that's per 100,000 population. And our positivity rate is at 13%. So right now, we would ask that you take the most prevention strategies to prevent spread in the schools. We're also going to look at considering the level of impact to a school. So low impact would be zero or just sporadic cases. Student absenteeism would be baseline, staff capacity would be normal. Medium transmission would be two outbreaks within a short period of time, or sporadic outbreaks in a school setting. Student absenteeism would be slightly above baseline and staff capacity may be strained. High would be several outbreaks in the school within a short period of time. The size of the outbreaks may be large or the scope of the outbreaks is significant. We would have high school absenteeism and critical staff capacity. So for isolated outbreaks in the classroom or activity, what we recommend is when there have been multiple cases identified in the classroom within 14 days, we may recommend a move to virtual instruction if we identify along with the school that the transmission actually occurred in the classroom. For activities, the sports teams or extracurricular groups, when multiple cases occur, we may recommend that that sport or extracurricular activity be paused when there are two or more cases. When again, those two cases have occurred because of an association on the team or the group. And they may be paused for, for longer periods of time depending on the scope of the outbreak. Like how many cases we're dealing with? Are they ongoing? Is there something else going on? And we'll work with the school on implementing those measures. We may recommend increased testing, such as testing on day seven or in day 14 in conjunction with those pausing of activities so we can get them back going as soon as possible. So when a school may experience a worsening from medium to high transmission, we may need to look at implementing strict six-feet distancing from other people in those situations. When masks cannot be worn, such as when eating or communal dining, maximizing that distance as much as possible when moving through food service lines, using additional space outside the cafeteria if possible to facilitate distancing. During activities, when increased isolation occurs, such as singing, shouting, playing instruments, playing sports, distancing is not a replacement for mask-wearing. So you would want to distance plus wear a mask. And then in common areas like lobbies and auditoriums, you may want to restrict certain activities. You may want to close or stagger communal spaces. You may want to limit assemblies and other school gatherings. And also potentially limiting nonessential interactions between teachers and staff that may contribute to adult-to-adult transmission. And then as we're looking at those after-school sports activities, this is kind of a criteria that is on the Health Department website. It looks at lower-risk sports activities versus higher-risk sports activities. And it's really the amount of time that they interact with each other, that they touch each other, that we see that cases. We see secondary transmission during these higher-risk sports activities. So it's all something to take into account. If you have high transmission in the community, high transmission in a school, you may want to consider pausing certain activities when there are outbreaks. And then this is our contact information for general questions about isolation and quarantine. The community can reach out to this number and extension. And one of our COVID team members will return their call. The Portsmouth Health Department also offers testing on Tuesday from 12:30 to 3:30. And then Thursday, 9:00 AM to 12:00 PM is a walk-in clinic for those aged five and older. Your primary contact is your school epidemiologist at Sydney Harper. And then I'm her backup. Any questions?
Thank you again, Ms. Wentz, for coming. I know there were, there were some questions about the athletic program and quarantine policy for that. So I'll start with Vice Chair Atkinson and we can go around the table.
Thank you, Ms. Wentz. I think my, my biggest concern on the athletics part is we have students that could possibly lose a scholarship due to that 14-day quarantine. I know other divisions are, are not doing that 14-day quarantine. What other methods can we put in place outside of potentially missing the entire season? Did you guys look into rapid testing versus that 14-day? Because I can't, I can't see as a division doing all their lives, that's what they've been working on. And to lose that due to COVID, I, I can't bear to hear that.
We certainly appreciate that. Our first recommendation would be really encouraging the athletes to get vaccinated. If they're vaccinated, they don't have to quarantine. The next method would be testing. And you all, I believe, are signed up for the best testing program that should be implemented within the month. Once that testing is onboard, testing more frequently to keep an activity open.
So if I'm, if I'm an athlete and I'm, and I'm not vaccinated and I come in contact and I don't have any symptoms and I go do a rapid test and my rapid test is negative, I still have to quarantine for 14 days?
The shortest quarantine available is the seven-day quarantine after exposure with testing on day five for non-vaccinated individuals. So that is something that could be considered.
So at the most, five days?
Seven days quarantine.
Seven days. So on the fifth day, if I get the rapid test and it's negative, I still have to do seven-day quarantine?
That's just the incubation period for COVID is so long that we need to be sure. I'll come back.
Dr. Whitaker?
How long after the second dose of vaccination would you not need to quarantine?
Two weeks after the second dose.
Ms. Williams?
My question is, this presentation is very informative and helpful. Has it been given to the, to the schools, all the staff? So the people will know what to, so the teachers and the people that work with the students will know what to expect and what?
We're going to get a copy of it and make sure that everybody gets a copy of this information.
What could it be given by, you know, like a big assembly or something? I think it's very important.
As long as it's virtual, that would be great. It's looking like a true epidemiologist.
The staff will say that they don't know or they haven't heard of this. I think it's very good. And, and it has all the guidelines.
Well, maybe we could.
I mean, you could send it to them.
Yeah, we could, we could pre-record it, pre-record a session and then send it out to all staff.
Have a faculty meeting.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, all, all teachers and bus drivers, everyone, all the Well, all teachers and bus drivers, everyone, all the staff.
And if you don't have something like that, then we can set something up with our communications department and get you to sit in and go over this and then we can have it available to send out.
Ms. Thomas and then Ms. Hines.
So Ms. Wentz, you in your presentation, thank you again. You mentioned that we are considered high right now based on our, okay. And is that breakdown, do you look at per school or is it really just citywide?
So I'm working on getting together a dashboard where we can break it down per school. I just have to see if we can match up our census tract with the school zoning areas. But we are working on trying to map that out for you so that you can have more guidance.
Okay, because I saw, I tried to write it down really quick, but you had that we should limit in the high, there were certain things we should start doing like enforcing a strict six-feet distance when we, I guess, in doing lunches and so forth. And then you also had, as your last bullet, limit nonessential interactions amongst teachers. So are you saying we should not have, because like right now, we have different specialists that go into different schools throughout the day. Are you saying these are type of activities we should stop right now or?
So you might want to look at decreasing all staff meetings when there is another way for that to happen. But your specialists, I believe, that that would be considered an essential thing for their job.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hines.
Thank you. To go to Ms. Williams' point, if everybody was given basically the protocols that we're using for this, that would cut down on the amount of information that we're being given that certain staff is being treated this way, certain staff is being treated that way. And it really probably has to do with the COVID, you know, their vaccination status or where their exposure was. Because it's not like you can go into everybody's medical history and give this information. But if we know that, you know, X equals Z and B equals, you know, L or M, then we're not treating people differently and we don't, you know, people aren't going to feel as if they're in danger because somebody's favorite teacher or somebody's favorite staff member is being treated differently than others. So, but to go to that point. But also too, you set a dashboard with your census tracker. Don't we update a dashboard with ours every day? How often? And this may not be for you, Ms. Wentz, and I'm sorry. But for our PPS dashboard, how often are we updating it?
I think it's daily.
I mean, it says daily, but you know, sometimes what happens in the school and what happens on that dashboard doesn't necessarily drive. I don't know who that, but that's my next question is, you know, we do have a dashboard. We're required by VDOE to have a dashboard during this. So who updates our PPS dashboard and how often is it updated? So that we are having the information out as much as we can. The PPS dashboard, is it updated daily and who updates that?
Yes, yes. HR covers the staff piece and the nurse supervisor and her staff, they cover the students.
And Ms. Wentz, you also mentioned, when we were talking about athletics and the student athletes, that you felt as though the best prevention would be vaccination. And that's a great lead in, I guess, Dr. Bracy, you have a, yeah, another question? Just a question.
So Ms. Wentz, what are our neighboring cities doing any of that? Because I know that you can still contract COVID even if you're vaccinated. And even with the exposure, so any event of that, what, I know our neighboring cities aren't doing the seven-day quarantine.
No, they're doing the 10 or 14-day option. None of the cities around this have gone to that shorter day option primarily because of our high transmission right now. It's a testing. Testing is, testing capacity has reached limited capacities on certain days in the Hampton Roads area. So it would be quite a feat to track everybody in quarantine and ensure that you see a negative test and then get them back to school on the right day. It's not to say that it can't be done, but a lot of planning has to go into make that happen. And it's something certainly that we can work toward.
So as far as you know, what other divisions have had several games canceled because of COVID? Because I follow sports closely and I know there have been some COVID outbreaks in other divisions, but their games haven't been canceled.
I believe all of the local ones have had to cancel games at some point or practices. At least in talking with the other Epi's.
I know Virginia Beach has canceled games.
They might have rescheduled them. But the sports teams are unfortunately where we're seeing a lot of our outbreaks right now. It's not necessarily that the sport itself is causing the outbreaks, but it's because they socialize outside of the sport in the same groups. So that socialization leads to, they might have sleepovers, they might have get-togethers, they ride in the car together and they're doing all of those activities without a mask on. So that's another thing that you could potentially talk to your athletes about is minimizing their exposures outside of athletics if they want to continue practicing safely.
Thank you.
Dr. Bracy?
Okay, and the item, the other item on the agenda talks about the staff and students in extracurricular activities, which is what we're going to be looking at as well with our students that are involved in extracurricular activities, those involved in sports clubs, as well as the coaches and sponsors that also participate in those clubs, is the resolution that we're going to present to the board for the MOOC board meeting next Thursday. We've been working with our council, Mr. Carroll, and he's been guiding us through the process. And you want to give any additional information on that or?
No, we have a proposed resolution that we're working with. You'll see that at the next session. Essentially, it is, it would be similar in nature to some of the others in the area that have passed similar resolutions. Certainly in consultation with the health department and, you know, generalized guidance on how to keep the students safe.
Alright, thank you so much. I know it's putting you on the spot, Janara, but do you have any input on the vaccination process for student athletes from a board representative perspective?
I think that us voting to have athletes mandate vaccine, I think, is going the right direction because all of us be protected.
Right, thank you so much, sir.
So can I add something? So is it, is it safe to say, I mean, because basically what Biden has said is going to have to happen and we're just waiting those final details from the CDC or from OSHA or whatever it is from?
Well, that's it.
I mean, I know we're going to write a policy, but the policy is being driven by.
No, this proposal was in reference to student athletes. The policy from the Biden administration was for all staff.
Gotcha, okay.
Do you have any other comments or questions? Yes, sir?
I assume it would go in place if it was voted, if it's voted on next Thursday.
That's good, good point, good point. We're looking at the winter sports.
Great question, sir.
The winter sports usually begins early November. So once we have this approved, we may have to look at pushing, pushing that back some. I know some of the Suffolk had to do something similar. By the time it was passed in order for them to get both vaccines as well as the two-week waiting period so they would be considered fully, right.
And would this policy also have an option for mandated testing if they don't get vaccinated? If they choose not to?
Yeah, that's the weekly testing piece that's associated with it. But just to remember, as Ms. Wentz said, those that are not fully vaccinated, if an outbreak does occur, they won't be playing, but their teammates will.
Right. And, um.
Will we be offering the vaccine in schools free of charge?
Yes, we're trying to work with the health department to establish the schools as clinics. We did the same thing earlier this summer for some of the students that were of age. So we've done it and it'll be a matter of reestablishing that again.
Thank you.
Thank you. I don't know if Ms. Wentz addressed this, I might have missed it. But if we're talking about student athletes and the option to test in lieu of vaccination, is there a preference in terms of what type of testing we require? Whether it's the, okay, no. Okay, no, I mean, like in the validity of the test, they're both equally, okay.
I would say if somebody is symptomatic and their rapid test is negative, we do recommend following up with a PCR because the recommendation would be.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Brer, basically what she said was if somebody is showing symptoms and their rapid test comes back negative, they're going to push them to go get the PCR test. And so, you know, asking about the validity of, if you're showing symptoms and you're coming back negative, they're going to push you to double check.
Got it, good.
Did I summarize that? Okay. I don't want to misrepresent, but it is difficult to hear.
Any further questions for Ms. Wentz? Thanks so much for coming and sharing your time with us. We really appreciate it. Thank you so much. Agenda item 3.6 is school safety. I want to make sure we added this item to the agenda for apparent reasons in the case board members had questions in reference to this. But I do want to start by commending Dr. Bracy and his staff. We had a, you know, quite a weekend of violence throughout our city involving our students. And he quickly moved into action to implement additional safety measures at our high schools across the city. And that prevented what could have been another tragedy this week. So I'm really grateful to him, his team, the teachers, the administrators for the work he did in making that happen. As of right now, we do have metal detectors in place. After the tragic incident in Newport News, the staff immediately purchased additional ones and detectors for enhanced school safety. Thankfully, those came in last week prior to the weekend. So they were able to put those into action this week for that. There are many things that we stand in need of as a city in reference to violence. As a school division, we want to make sure that we're doing the best we can to ensure the safety of our students while they're in our buildings or on our buses. So if there are any requests that you think we should have of this city to increase safety in our communities around our bus stops, please make sure you compile that list and shoot those to us so we can have our liaisons work on that with our city council members as well. But I'll allow Dr. Bracy to speak on this and then we'll open up the floor for board members for questions. But thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Patillo. So as he mentioned, you know, we've been sort of heavily monitoring things, particularly at the high school level for the past, this past week. All students have been screened before entering the building. So, you know, everyone's on high alert. And I think that is a procedure that is making some students and staff feel better about that actually occurring. As a result, what was already in place, as you all know, the Sheriff's Department provides school resource officers to our school division. And he has submitted a plan for us to consider, some recommendations that I've just received prior to coming into this meeting. So I'm going to review that with my staff and then we will follow up with them. And then of course, we will share with you what our recommendations are moving forward, any changes that we will make in our current procedures. But just wanted to let you know that, you know, we're constantly monitoring and making improvements to try to make sure that everybody is safe and feel good about coming to school.
Thank you. Mr. Parent and Dr. Whitaker?
I know that, Mr. Chairman, you had recommended and Dr. Bracy and also in our finance meeting, I think Mr. Falk is securing bids for clear backpacks. Now, in order for that to be implemented, the board, it's my understanding, the board would have to pass a policy. So when the board passes a policy that all students would have to, and you're talking about, my understanding at the meeting was that we had, it would be only for high school. We would start with high school. Is that correct?
I think what that was, we would start initially, immediately with the high school. But that would be something that we would be funding out of our grant fund because we're going to tie that into safety. But in terms of the division-wide, that's something that we were going to discuss. At this point, we don't want to put this burden on parents because they've already purchased backpacks. We understand that. So any change that we make immediately will fall on us. But going forward, if it's the board's will, it would be division-wide. And then we would give parents enough time to know ahead of time. This is a requirement from the school division. So we wanted to, if we were going to approve it, we wanted it to be approved with elementary and middle knowing, starting year 22, 23, that would be their new requirement. But being that we're going to it immediately, when I say immediately, once we, once this approved and we do further research on vendors that can provide this, then we will move forward. We will set that date, whatever that is accordingly.
It could be in January, but it could be pushed back until actually we got.
Until we can provide the resource.
The vendors and how many we need and so forth. Because I can just see some parents at this point said, look, I've invested in my son or daughter's backpack and I don't want to use the school systems, but the school system's paying for it. But unless there's a policy, if the board approves a policy, that it is a requirement. Then you're going to have, you're going to go into another situation where that's going to be challenged. Because a parent can say, well, I don't have to admit your requirement. Then where do we go from there? I mean, I'm trying to think long-term of mandating, I mean, I'm for it. I think it's, I think it's a good gesture of school safety. But I'm just looking down the road as far as we're going to provide, we're going to provide the backpack. And there are going to be some students who are going to say, I'm not going to do that. And then there's going to have to be some kind of, where do we go from there? What kind of disciplinary action?
That's a school administration disciplinary issue in a day-to-day operation.
Yeah, and what I would like is, I want to have the finance committee, as you did, you know, investigate the cost of it and vendors, but also put it in the hands of the policy committee because that would be something they want to look at. And it may be something, looking at the cost, not saying we could afford to do it every year for every student, but let's get the cost of it anyway. So we can know what that is. It might be something that can be budgeted, might be something that cannot. Or if not, churches and communal organizations have backpack giveaways every year. I think it would be a great opportunity for us to partner with them to tell them what kind of backpacks our students need, the amount of them and what they could possibly do to help us fund that. So I think getting the details from the finance committee first, having the policy committee put something together for us to review, whether it would include just high school or all students. You know, have them put together, bring it back so we can flush out the details at that time and present something feasible for our parents.
Okay.
So you don't think it's feasible to try to do the middle school at this time?
Oh, well.
Because they have a lot of issues.
Yeah, they did. Well, and even upper elementary as well. So what we wanted to do is just to get an idea of where we were cost-wise and then we will come back and look at it. Because, yeah, looking at it, you would want that to be secondary. But then, you know, we also have sixth graders at our elementary schools.
So basically where we are now is we're going to, I hope Mr. Falk can give us some idea of what the cost would be overall. And we can decide from there how many students we would like to fund or if they'll get the team this process or not. Vice Jackson?
I just wanted to comment related to this. I know if the board decides to implement this policy, and I know the policy committee would have to go over this. But when we talk about clear backpacks, we have to think about our female population and what the hygiene products. So are we going to also provide additional packaging for females who carry hygiene products? Because I wouldn't want to subject them to any embarrassment to show that in a clear backpack.
That was brought up and Dr. Bracy has an answer.
Yes, that was brought up. And we're going to look into that, but also at our schools, we provide those products as well. So those are in our bathrooms. So those are in our bathrooms or in our schools and designated places because, you know, that's a requirement that we have those in place. But as far as looking at packaging, you know, we talked about it in the finance committee meeting. There would be some concessions, we just need to see what that will be. Because we understand, although we provide it, that may not be what you want.
Right.
So we want to make sure, right.
And there are also some clear backpacks that come with an additional small pouch inside of it as well. So I guess that's something we can actually look at.
Looking, right.
I just want to make sure we consider that.
Dr. Whitaker.
Thank you, Dr. Patillo. Dr. Bracy, are there any other resources that we need? I know you said they ordered additional metal detectors and wands, but there's an issue with students missing part of their first block because of the process of getting them through the checkpoint. Do we need to add additional officers, metal detectors, so that process is expedited?
Right, and I had a conversation with Dr. Patillo as well. Because with everything that's going on within the community, you know, everyone feels better with this process currently being in place. So with us extending it, those are things that we need to look at. We either need to look at the, if we can, increase the officers. And some of that information may be built into this report that I received from the Sheriff's Department, so I'll know more information later. But we also may have to look at our schedule as well to allow the time, the additional time, to get them in, to be screened. You know, that's something that we're looking at. Of course, the first day when we did, it took a longer period of time, but my understanding, it has shrunk some since that time, so it's not as long, but it's still bleeding into the instructional time. And that's something that we will take a look at as well and make a recommendation on what's best.
And, you know, the other concern is that when they're standing outside, that's a risk as well. And then, we haven't had, we've had good weather, but, you know, with inclement weather.
Yeah.
So I was just wondering, is that something we could possibly ask the city for for emergency funding? Because it is a, it's a public health emergency right now.
Right. We will do that. Dr. Patillo and I have a meeting in a couple of weeks with the city manager and the mayor. So school safety, community will be a part of that.
All right, thank you.
Ms. Thomas, I'm sorry, Mr. Tillis, then Ms. Thomas, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Chair. Board member Whitaker's comments in regards to the officers. I think that's a great idea because definitely the manpower to wand and to send people through metal detectors, especially in the early mornings when kids are first getting to school. I know Monday, as you mentioned, the first incident they did is Norcom, had a huge delay compared to the other schools. Is there a way that we could look at the cost that it would take to hire additional school security guards? I know that the police department and the sheriff's department, they're going to do the best that they can, but of course, they're constrained to some type of limits as well. I think right now, some high schools have between three to four security guards. If we could look at what it would cost to take that up to five, six, five or six security guards to increase the flow. Because when, to Dr. Whitaker's point, we're going to have a long line of kids outside. It's starting to get cold weather and also adds to a risk of being outside the building, especially when incidents occurring right around the corner. One thing that I don't want to see happen is, one way to consolidate the line would be keep the kids on the buses and do one bus at a time, but that is not an effective measure. I know when I was a driver, schools did that and that was probably one of the worst things they could have done. And then plus, that's going to put buses even further behind. So could we look at possibly moving up the time in which kids can start arriving to the school building? The other school hours seem to have been adjusted to some type of standard. And so the only one that hasn't been moved is high school. And just looking at the time it's going to take, because, I mean, this is our, unfortunately, this is our normal right now. And we have to do sometimes things outside of our comfort, outside of our wants, to provide safety to our students and to our staff. And so I think that we need to look at adjusting our high school times as well as increasing officers in our high schools to a minimum of six to provide an extra manpower, because you're looking at, we have multiple entrances in our buildings. And I know right now, we might not have the resources to cover every door. But, I mean, all it takes is a student coming in that's getting checked and they run to the back door and let one of the friends in who may have something. And I know one thing that's happened, and this was mentioned Monday at Norcom, is a lot of policies, especially when it comes to winding. When I was in school, it was the same thing. And so I kind of laughed when they told me this. Every four students. Kids, they know it's every four students. I knew it in middle school, I knew it in high school, we all knew it, we still know it. And the kids know it's every four students. And so if I have something, all I have to do is let somebody speak in front of me. And now I'm number five, and now I know I'm not going to get wanded. And so this jumps to my course that we need more manpower because we have to make sure that our kids are checked, you know. And I'm not just bringing this up just to bring up, these are actually comments that have come to me over the last week. And when I mentioned, when they mentioned number four, I mean, that's something, and I've been out of school now 10 years. And so for kids to already know this system already, I mean, hey, I'm going to let the kid in front of me go. And so we really need to increase manpower here. We are in a crisis here in our city. And, you know, unfortunately, we can't control every safety thing. We have to call upon the city council, and I know that. However, as a school division, we have an obligation to be proactive. And it's too late when somebody's been shot, it's too late when somebody's been killed. And I don't want anybody in our school division to experience that. And unfortunately, but thank God, nothing's happened in our buildings, but our kids are being killed in our streets. And schools should be a safe haven. And if we can please get some answers to that or presentation to that, I would greatly appreciate it.
And me, Ms. Thomas, Mr. Parent, but I did want to comment on that and say that even with the school security officers, I think even with the ones we have now, it may need to be additional training for them. The training that's required for them now, I don't believe is adequate enough for what we're asking them to do on a daily basis when it comes to wanting students to do with arms, with guns, things of that sort. And again, the sheriff's department gave us additional help, but we were able to do this because we used some of our own staff as well, pulled them away from their normal duties to assist, you know, to make sure these things ran smoothly. And the last thing I think we should be doing is putting even more job titles to teachers and, you know, administrators and coaches. So we do need additional security, but I think training is going to be paramount for that. And at the end of the day, I still think the presence of police officers and deputies sends a clearer and stronger message than those in, you know, the school t-shirts and uniforms as well. So I don't think it's one answer. I don't think there is an answer. I think we can just try to, you know, make things work the best way we can. But I'll let Dr. Bracy comment, then I'll go straight to Ms. Thomas.
Yeah, and Mr. Tillis, everything that you said, I mean, I agree with. I think with the recommendations, you know, just off the top of my head, when we start talking about we need to change the schedule, well, the high school students are already arriving, the buses are rolling up at seven o'clock already, you know, waiting to be dismissed from the buses. So if we're going to ask them to come in earlier, then if they have kids, they're going to have to get up, get out earlier to the stops. And then also, not that this is a problem, but it's something that we have to consider, then we're going to, basically, we're extending these routes now. Because now the driver who is going to probably have to start 30 to maybe 40 minutes earlier, and that may take them over the standard six and a half hours that we have. So that's just something that we got to look at. Also, that's going to affect other schedules, is we may have to adjust the high school schedule, the tier two, middle, elementary, tier three and four. So we may have to do that. So I think all this is good, but it's going to take more than working with the finance committee. We've got to work with the curriculum committee as well, because we got so many things that we're going to have to consider with everything that you're asking of us to put that into place. I mean, it's going to take, because it's like moving parts. You know, if you move this, then I got to adjust here. So I think that's, it's worth looking into, but we're going to start with the report that we got from the sheriff's department to see what we can do, I guess, immediately from that checklist. But I think moving forward, we need to take what you're saying. And basically, we got to look at a comprehensive approach to all of this. And I agree that we need to, because, you know, unfortunately, this is the norm that's taking place now in our community for the past few weeks. And I don't know when it's going to stop, none of us know, but we just got to be prepared to do whatever we can to try to make sure that everybody feels good about sending their kids to school. So we will take a look at it, but what you mentioned is comprehensive, and I know that's not going to be able to happen right away, but we will get started in working towards that.
Thank you. Ms. Thomas, then, Mr. Parent.
Yeah, Dr. Bracy kind of tied into what I was going to ask anyway, just a comprehensive approach that we can take. And in terms of the report that the sheriff shared with you, will we be able to get some of those highlighted points shared with us, like for whatever the sheriff provided in terms of recommendations that we can do? Will you share that out with us later?
Yes. Yeah, once we look at it, I will share that information out and then what we, and what we can, what we can do immediately, what we need to plan for.
Okay, and then also, along that same line, I know we're talking about the clear book bags, we're talking about other items. In terms of some of the preventive controls we can do, you had mentioned, Chair, about asking the policy committee to look at policy, I guess, if we did implement the clear book bag or something like that. But can we, I would also like to see if we can do some type of policy in terms of our disciplinary actions to maybe just even be more of a deterrent. I don't have to look at what our consequences are now, but somehow involving, I know parents are involved right now, but somehow, you know, looking at some policy changes we can make where if a student is involved in some type of disciplinary actions, just a greater consequence to get them, I don't know, to get their guardian or parent more involved in ensuring that it's understood, ensuring that it's kind of corrected. I have to look at our policies again to really understand where we are, but I feel like there, we need to be more preventive on our policy side too. And then also, in terms of that, if we can look at some type of mediation for parents, I'll give you an example. I know that sometimes with incidents that happen in our community, parents do try to, or, you know, families try to address them in the community, but it just doesn't go as planned and sometimes it escalates even further. So if the schools could somehow offer that, you know, support or mediation partnership, I think that could just help, help people be able to talk some things out, especially when they kind of go sideways when they try to do it on their own in the community. That's just one of that, one of the issues that I've seen in terms of some things that have escalated in the community.
Mediation. All right. Mr. Parent.
Dr. Bracy's already answered those schedules. Is that, adjusting the schedule if you, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
That's going to be, that's going to be an interesting thing.
As a student, I want to say thank you to Dr. Bracy and your staff. Because even though we stand in line every morning in the weather, the students, they feel safer that we take every bag, everything that goes to the metal detector. So I want to say thank you, Dr. Bracy, for your precautions.
Thanks, sir. It was good to hear that, your respect on that, it really was.
Chair, one question. How many entry points are we working with at Norcom right now?
Two.
Two? Two entry points, so you've got two designated metal detector sections?
Yes, so the walkers come in one door, the bus driver, the bus riders coming up the door.
Okay.
Just a follow-up question on school safety. Where are we on our truancy numbers? I know majority of the kids that are in the games, they're not at school and, you know, they miss several days. So where are we on the parent accountability piece as far as with attendance?
I would have to get that information.
But that to me, that's a preventive policy type thing.
You can't make grown people do anything.
They're not doing it now, they're not going to.
We wish we could.
We have some authority numbers?
And I just want to say, I do plan on trying to schedule a meeting with the Department of Social Services representative and also with someone from Commerce Attorney's Office and someone from the Circuit Court to see what options they actually have available as far as truancy, how they're treating chance petitions at this time. Because at one point, the judges weren't, they weren't even hearing chance petitions. So I really, I'm really, I've been busy burning the phone, I'm trying to set up meetings with different forces within our city to see what we can do as a collaborative effort to help address what the vice chair was just stating.
So don't they have to go to court if we put it in for them to go to court?
The judges haven't been hearing the case.
With the backlog that they had, like everybody else has, with the backlog, attendance isn't going to be.
And this was even before, before the pandemic, they weren't hearing chance petitions. So, Dr. Whitaker.
Just want to comment, I just want to be fearful about being punitive towards parents because some of them, I mean, there are a lot of parents who are doing the right thing and some of them, for different reasons, just do not have that control over, you know, the children that they have. So, you know, when you're talking about punishing parents, that's into issues of missing work problems in some cases and other issues. I think in terms of preventative measures, I agree with conflict resolution, you know, trying to get parents more involved in maybe more, you know, positive ways rather than, you know, punitive ways. I think that's a better approach.
Ms. Williams, then, Ms. Thomas.
I was going to say, you know, we've discussed this for many years about truancy issues and when they go to court, then the judge, the judges are reluctant to do things with parents that are already in poverty and having a difficult time even with the job. So they're not really, our judges, they don't. According to the people that go to court, they get frustrated because they are sent back. So, and I think also that the school system, I believe, already has in place the steps that they go until they get to mediation with the parents. Because I had a case this past week that a parent called me about her son that she thought was being bullied by a sixth grader. And I called the principal because I knew her. And I told her that normally I would call Dr. Bracy, but since I knew her, I called her. And they handled the situation, the parent was asking the same thing you were saying, Yolanda, about mediation, getting the parents together. And she informed me that they were going to handle the situation because the sixth grader did do, according to the bus, what they said he did. So they were going to take disciplinary action. And then, but there were steps that they would go through before they go to Dr. Sandelin or the mediation. So they, I think they have all of that in place, all of those things. It's just that we are on the outside looking in, they're doing all those things sometime and we just assume they're not, because there's just so many problems going on out there. And I agree that we must hold parents accountable, but we don't know how. And they are grown, so the school system can't make them do anything. And sometimes, you all know that in these hearings that we have that are private... And sometimes, you all know that in these hearings that we have that are private, and we sit here and afterward we say, we see why the child is suffering. And sometimes it brings tears to your eyes, but they don't understand and we're, we're not able to teach them the better way.
Right.
So, you know, the only thing we can do is do the best we can for the children. And if we get a parent that we can't teach, and the teachers, because that situation last week, they could tell me right off the bat, everything that child had been involved in, that he should not have been involved. And then when you talk to the parent, the parent cusses them out and say, get out of my face. So it's, it's difficult all around, so we're just going to do the best we can. But I, I don't think that we can make it punitive for the parents. They're, they're at a loss.
Ms. Thomas then, Ms. Tillis.
Okay. And I just wanted to clarify, Dr. Whitaker, and I completely agree with you, I would never, I'm a parent myself, I would never want to punish, so I don't want to think of it as a punishment. When I say additional kind of, I'm at a loss for words lately, but what I'm talking about in terms of policy changes in our current disciplinary policy, if a student gets in trouble in school, I don't know, I'm going to ask if you know Dr. Win or anyone, if they get in trouble and their parent has to, I don't know, show up to school or before they're, they can come back, we just leave that parent out there alone. Do we partner with, you know, social services to maybe give them additional parenting counseling? That's what I mean by like, help changing our policy or changing our procedure for whatever additional support we offer the parent, because that student will continue to maybe, if that, to your point, Dr. Whitaker, if it's a parent that doesn't have control of their child, they might not have the tools, they might not have the resources, or just the, the knowledge of our additional skill set of what they could be doing. And maybe they don't know about additional resources or, you know, grassroots organizations that could assist them with their child, that could like kind of reach in and be the village to that child. So when I say preventative, that's kind of what I meant, I would never want to punish your parents, I just wanted to clear that up.
Right. Ms. Jackson.
Thank you, Chair.
No, I'm sorry.
No, okay.
Ms. Tillis first.
Listen, listen. I would never want to punish a parent, but we have parents that are contributing to the behavior of these kids and, and that's facts. They're allowing the kids to bring guns in the home, they know their kids are involved in gangs, they're dumping their kids on the streets. Just last week, I was almost in the process of adopting a 13, a 15-year-old because their parent just left them out. So it is parents that are the problem and we can't say we can't punish these parents when, if their parents, if these parents would have took control of their kids or either reported their kids, then we wouldn't have some of these deaths right now. So the parents need to be responsible because a lot of them do have blood on their hands. But...
Well, that is, that is so true, but we don't have that capacity.
I know, but it's, it's right now, right now, we, it's so many resources, these parents know about the resources, they know about these, they know about the organizations, they know about what we offer in the schools, they know about the resources in the cities. We have to stop enabling parents and say that they don't know because these parents do know, they find everything else, they can go online Facebook, they can go online to social media, there's research, there's, all the research is there. I think the reason why we're in the situation that we are right now as a country, as a city, is because we've enabled parents, we said, oh, they don't know this, they don't know that.
Oh, I believe that, yes, they don't care.
So...
But we can enforce them to do.
Right. But I just, I just, my frustration is because I know firsthand that some of these parents are at fault. But my second thing is with everything that's going on in the schools, a lot of our teachers are going through some things, they're losing their kids, a lot of the kids in the schools are going through, they're losing their classmates. Dr. Bracy, is there a way we can just take a mental health day for our teachers, our students, our staff? I think everyone just needs a pause day.
Okay.
Is there a way to, I mean, if it's the consensus of the board?
Well, when you say, are we still providing instruction?
The student holiday either, can we?
Is that...
Is it, I mean, just like, for example, we're not going to have any possible snow days because we have the virtual setup. When I say a mental health day, I've seen a school division in another state do it to where it's just no instruction, it's just a mental health day because there's so much going on.
There's a lot, yeah.
Right, right.
Mm-hmm.
That is, we are not allowed to, to give days that are not within the calendar and we already have the maximum number of holidays that we have in place, so we don't have the authority with the state saying that we have to return back to in-person to grant that type of, of free day.
Is there any other alternatives that we can look into to make something like that happen?
Let us, let us look into it and, and see what, what may be available.
And I asked Dr. Bracy, he has a hard time telling y'all no. But, but it would be extremely difficult because just like anything else, if we were to, to try to include another day, he would have to get Dr. Karmari, try to break out his calculator and say how many minutes it could take for each day of the year.
We're giving him some gray hair.
I can't have that with mental health. It's important for some of our teachers.
I agree, I think we should probably look at alternatives of things we can do to, to give more support to our teachers as far as in regards to their mental health. I also think we can take away instructional days to do it after the research is conducted so far.
Yes, so I was sitting here, a lot of your campuses, college campuses, have anonymous texts, anonymous apps where you can report suspicious activity, crime, or rumors thereof. Is it possible that we could implement something like that in our school division? Because talking with a lot of your teachers, a lot of teachers know that there's gang activity, a lot of them know a lot of details. Nobody's talking. And I feel like we have an anonymous way of communicating these things. Teachers, bus drivers, students, with at least, at least an outlet. Now, somebody might not, they might not respond, they might not say anything, but it's not because we aren't giving them an anonymous way of being able to report. On many college campuses, a lot of crimes are stopped through anonymous tips. There's an app called Live Safe that ODU uses, and they have signs throughout the campus, on campus grounds, in campus buildings, that allow for people to download an app or to text a number, to at least give a lead so that we can be proactive instead of being reactive when situations happen. I think if it's possible, if we could look into, I don't know what that cost might be, but if we can start some type of campaign. Because right now we have, there's a bad narrative in the world where snitches get stitches, nobody wants to snitch. But I think in a press conference the city held, the police chief was talking about anonymous lines that we have in the community, 188 lock you up and all these other crime lines. But the narrative has been painted where people feel as if their number is not anonymous or whatever, and so a lot of people don't. But if we can create and change the narrative of this in our school division, because these students that we have are eventually going to become hopefully productive citizens in our community, and so we have the ability as a school division to help change this narrative that I can't tell or I'm scared to tell because X, Y, and Z. But if we provide an anonymous resource to allow parents or students or teachers to voice what they heard, because I guarantee you, having conversations with a lot of students, they can tell you what somebody's probably planning. They're just scared to say it and there's no way to say it. And they're not going to go to a teacher and say, hey, so-and-so, so-and-so, they're doing this. But if we can provide an anonymous way for them to maybe text whatever to a number, and that number be in conjunction with the school division, the police department, other law enforcement agencies, we can be on top of it immediately. And parents and the kids don't have to do it at school, they can do it at home, at home one night. I mean, like I think, for example, on Instagram, you know, the picture was posted, I'm sure some student saw it, you know, thank God somebody was able to see it and they reported it. But tips like that that can help alleviate some of this burden that people are scared to come to school, come to work.
Yes, we, we will see what the police department, sheriff's department has along those lines and, and then we can take it from there. And if not, I'm sure, I'm sure it's a vendor out there. If we do an RFP, somebody has something similar to that, so we can take a look at, we can take a look at it. But we'll start locally.
Ms. Hines.
And just to Board Member Tillis' point, at one time I thought we did have some sort of text to tip.
We did.
Especially...
For the bullying.
For the bullying. And when we went through and we purchased metal detectors for the high schools four or five years ago with grants, right after you got on board, I believe, we made it a thing to have safe. But to go to what Janari says, is the students are feel safer coming in the door. Being, being an instructor on the day of an event that's less than 10 miles from where you are, the reaction of students is amazing at that point. They took after looking after themselves, you know? We had to have the discussions about somebody outside of this building wants to see you come home today, you know? So that, that's kind of my tagline with my kids. And so to give them a way to share information that can be anonymous, that can, but can be helpful, and, you know, taking that, taking that stigma away because somebody does want to see you come out of that building, it may not be a parent or you may not think it's a parent, but it's somebody that wants to see you come out of that building. And we just need to remember that, to remind our kids that they are loved by somebody and that somebody wants to see them make it through. And it doesn't, it may not be a family member, it may not be somebody that they cohabitate with, it may be somebody down the street that is, you know, their person. So I think we do need to give our students a way to be, help be a part of a solution and to, you know, identify, you know, people that don't necessarily have their best interest at heart.
Thank you. Ms. Jackson.
Thank you, Chair. If I'm, Board Member Tillis, if I'm hearing you correctly, you're looking for something bigger like the Here to Help. You know how we had the billboards, you're looking for a bigger campaign, the number and everything, and also promoting it across the city like we did Here to Help?
Yeah, most definitely. So man, you're looking for the anonymous line itself, but promoting it, you know, putting signs across the school campuses, across the city, social media, because kids are on Twitter, Instagram, everything, and letting them know that these things are here so that we can report them, parents as well. Because trust me, there's plenty of stories to be told, people are just scared to tell.
I, I agree, I just, I just wanted, what you were saying to be heard, that we, we do need that, the same way we got Here to Help across the billboards, I don't know, we can have see something, say something campaign, but have that number and how the students can report all across the city.
Thank you so much. If we have any more questions about 3.6, we'll move to 3.7, which is VSPA policies. They've been listed in board docs, and I ask all board members to review those throughout the week, and we'll have a vote on these policies at our next school board meeting. And if there are no direct questions in reference...
It's not a direct question about the VSPA policy, it's a direct, it's a question about revision of some of our internal policies. So one of the things I would, I would like for us to review, and I don't know if it's a policy, if it's a resolution, or if it's just in how we handle business, but I would like for us to look at how teachers' leave is used when they are contacted by us to quarantine.
Yeah.
You know, because part, part of, part of, we talk about teacher burnout, we talk about morale, we talk about everything, but if we, we understand that COVID is in the world and if I go to a concert, if I go to a wine fest, whatever, I'm taking that risk upon myself. However, if I get the phone call from Portsmouth Public Schools that I've been in close contact with somebody from Portsmouth Public Schools and I need to quarantine because I was here doing my job, I truly feel that we as a school system should look at bearing some of the burden for those teachers who are being put out so that they are not having to use their leave. I know that it's a lot, that we have other things that we need to look at when we, when we say that, we have to look at the financial impact, but I would like for us to revisit that policy, whether it's a policy, a resolution, whatever it is that we need to do. I would like to see us as a board and us as a division, look at carrying that burden for our teachers and our staff, that when we contact them and say, because you have been here doing your job, I need you to quarantine, I would like for us to look at that as, as a policy or whatever it is that it is that we need to do.
I, I know we discussed this earlier, but do we need our attorney to address this again or...
Because we were in close.
Okay.
You want me to go ahead and talk to him? Sure. So it brings up some of the points about how the federal law required employers to provide paid time off last year in the beginning of the pandemic. It's called the Families First Coronavirus Act, FFCPRA. And that act ceased to be mandatory as of March of this year, end of March of this year. And there was a voluntary provision of it, which also sunsetted on September 30th, so it just expired. And so under the, the law, there is no longer a active requirement or voluntary participation requirement for employers to provide paid time off in those circumstances that you described. And so the default is typically the, how any other illness or other situation like that would present to an employee, and that's how it's been treated thus far. And there are circumstances and other jurisdictions where there have been decisions made on a policy level by boards to do something more than what is the baseline required of the law, and that certainly is a policy decision. But as the law states right now, the division's following that and treating it accordingly. I think the division's trying to help people, but, but they are acting within the bounds of what's required there.
Thank you so much, Chair. Do we have any other comments in reference to our policies at all?
I just want to say, it, it may have been in close when we talked about the vaccine. We said that if the vaccinations are offered, you refuse to take it, then I don't think that we need to pay you to be, even if you're in class. There is, I mean, we can look at it because I'm on the policy committee, but if the vaccinations, you know, back then when they did that particular program, we didn't have any vaccinations. But if they're offered and the teacher or staff refuses to take it, and they come in close contact and they have to go home, because if we listen to Ms. Wentz tonight, if you've been vaccinated and you come in close contact without symptoms, you don't have to quarantine. So some of that, I'm not sure what, whether you were talking about everyone or what you wanted us to look at or...
Anybody that's on our payroll?
Oh, no. Okay, well, I'm not for that.
Okay.
If you, if you offered the vaccination and you refuse and you come into contact and you got to quarantine for 10 days, because if you had the vaccination, no symptoms, they're saying you don't have to do that. So...
I think, I think a lot, I think a lot of the policy discussion will be flushed out once we receive additional guidance from the federal government on how we should proceed with vaccinations with employers our side, so...
To that point, if you'd like, there, there has not been an announcement by OSHA yet on the temporary emergency, the emergency temporary standard that President Biden asked to be issued. To recap just quickly for you publicly, he did request, the president did request OSHA to issue a temporary standard, which would require employers to have, over 100 employees to have employees fully vaccinated or tested weekly, the, so that's the option. There is no indication that public school divisions would be exempt from that requirement. It's likely that that requirement, once the ETS is announced, would be phased in, so it wouldn't be sprung on us immediately, there'd be a period to understand the guidance and then react to it likely. And then finally, the, the, the ETS is expected, we were told as of September 10th, when the OSHA senior advisor made some statements about it, it was to be expected within the coming week. about it, it was to be expected within the coming weeks, quote, uh, with no real indication of a deadline. Uh, we are now about four weeks past that comment, so your guess is as good as mine when we'll receive it. I would anticipate it likely soon, given the administrative pressure on OSHA to get it done.
Thank you so much, sir. And again, if you have any other questions about the policies that are listed under three point seven, please shoot those to, uh, our policy committee or Dr. Karmari, uh, we'll get those answered for you and be prepared for a vote, a vote next week. Agenda item three point eight is consideration of a contract number nine ninety-eight dash P dash twenty twenty-one for athletic trainers. Uh, we vote on this contract every year for trainers for our student athletes. This contract has been vetted by N W B E committee and is approved, I mean, approved in the quiet, uh, the quiet process to meet that, uh, the eligible bid. It's been in your board docs, and if there are no questions.
For approval.
Thank you. Motion made by Ms. Axon, second by Ms. Williams. Any discussion? CNN roll call vote, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Atkinson?
Yes.
Mrs. Hines?
Yes.
Parent?
Yes.
Mrs. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Tillage?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Dr. Patillo?
Yes.
It's unanimous?
Thank you so much. Agenda item three point nine, consideration of contract number P dash one thousand dash B dash twenty-one twenty-two for pest control services. This has also been approved by N W B E committee. I entertain a motion at this time.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Parent, second by Vice Chair Axon. Any discussion? CNN roll call vote, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Atkinson?
Yes.
Mrs. Hines?
Yes.
Mr. Parent?
Yes.
Mrs. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Tillage?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Dr. Patillo?
Yes.
It's unanimous?
Thank you so much. Agenda item three point ten is agenda review for October fourteenth, twenty twenty-one that is listed in your board docs. If you have any additions, uh, to the agenda, please email those to Dr. Bracy and myself for further consideration for our next meeting. Oh, Ms. Hines?
Um, are we gonna, for, I see a contract placeholder, is that maybe for the RFP for a school rezone issue? You know, I'm gonna keep asking until we get it. And I know we got a lot of stuff going on, I do, but I do know that we are finished with the, I mean, the bid is closed and we're now in review, so.
Right. Yeah, we're, we're having, we're getting the committee together with all of their committee requirements, so that will not be coming unfortunately next week, but the committee is working.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you so much. Agenda item, uh, three point eleven, subcommittee reports. Do we have any reports that need to be read on this evening? Uh, Ms. Tillage?
Thank you, Chair. Um, so the, um, operations and auxiliary committee, uh, we had a meeting last week, uh, and we discussed, um, quite a few things, um, that our operations team and tech team have been up to since the beginning of the school year. Um, I'm gonna go briefly over some of these, um, topics. And so, um, the Here Come the Bus app, um, has, is up and running. Approximately fifteen hundred, um, parents have signed up, um, to, for this app. Um, all wall plaques for the name chain schools have been installed and identified place by the superintendent in all schools. Um, all lettering of name chain schools on outside of buildings have been completed. The H Vec two project at Churchland High School is complete. And, um, P P S is currently working on the city, working with the city to finalize some areas of concern related to that project. Um, additional, um, HIPAA filters have, um, been ordered for the Portsmouth Public Schools, um, cafeterias to assist with the air filtration in open areas of the school. Um, operations is currently working with H R to fill vacancies that are in our food services, transportation, and building services, the division. Um, conducting walk, school walkthroughs to identify school needs, um, with principals, um, in their schools. Um, as well as painting projects have been completed at Waters Middle, Emily Spong, Churchland Elementary, Douglas Park, and Mount Herman. Replacing the exterior lights that were not working at all, P P S buildings have been replaced, um, replaced lighting at Manor Gymnasium and Auxiliary Gymnasium at I C Norcom, um, High School. The Manor Stadium painting is complete. The Manor Gym floor is complete. The Manor Gymnasium bleacher replacement is scheduled for October twenty twenty-one. Um, we also have some updates, um, as far as the transportation department's concern. Um, some board, um, some comments that came to our school board on the April twenty-ninth meeting, um, from some concerned bus drivers. Um, our auxiliary department, as well as our transportation department, has, um, been proactive with these, um, concerns. And so just to share a couple of the items in which our auxiliary team and transportation have addressed, um, our transportation and auxiliary department has established an annual, um, bus driver conference, um, which will be held annually for a two-day conference, um, to include the topics of transport and special education students, professionalism, contact tracing during COVID, first aid, CPR, fire extinguishers, um, and what is expected during an accident, um, as well as, this will be an annual thing, so this past June they did their first one, and so there will be one every year ongoing. The transportation department has also re-implemented the monthly safety meetings with our, uh, bus drivers and bus monitors to go over, um, any safety, uh, safety concerns or safety procedures, um, for our bus drivers and monitors. As well as the advisory committee, transportation advisory committee, um, has begin, has begun meeting. Their first meeting was on September the twenty-seventh, and so they will be meeting with our, um, operations department, as well as members of the transportation department to voice any concerns and to hopefully work on solutions that are, um, good for both the division as well as for our drivers. Um, as well as there's been a monthly transportation newsletter that will be, um, that has been established, and, um, I don't know when the first newsletter will be sent out to our drivers and monitors, but that will be a monthly newsletter to, um, inform, uh, all of our transportation staff of any communications throughout the division, um, to help bridge that gap of communication. And so, um, that concludes my report. Thanks.
Do you mind if I go?
Thanks so much, sir.
You go ahead.
Ms. Thomas?
Yeah, I was just gonna do a quick, really quick budget of finance committee meeting. We talked about most of the things that we discussed in our meeting, clear book bags, um, and the funding, um, for us to provide those book bags to our high school, for our high school students. Um, of course, we went over the reappropriation update and the city council passing that, so we're thankful for our liaisons and, uh, for Mr. Falk and Dr. Bracy for, um, ensuring that that was a smooth process with the city manager. Um, and Mr. Rand just gave us an update about the bus driver salaries, our nurse salaries and with the compensation review. Uh, we also briefly talked about, um, one of the issues, I think, regarding pay schedule, um, or just the bus driver's pay schedule, and looking into maybe in the future how to spread their benefits so that their first initial checks aren't hit as hard.
Right.
So that's something, um, under review. And then, of course, uh, we did a lot of talk about federal funds because that's something we're trying to figure out what's the best way to use. So I'm looking forward to Mr. Falk, um, providing us a breakdown of those grant funds, um, during our next session. Um, and then Mr. Falk also had prepared us, um, with some of the healthcare plan costs, but, um, was explaining how, um, he had to really work hard and make sure that, you know, those, that increased cost was not passed on to our employees. So that's really, yes.
And we, um, we have a new auditor, uh, Clifton Larson Allen, C L A, and, uh, they're new, and so they're learning us and we're learning them. And, uh, Mr. Falk talked about the external audit and the Student Activity Fund, and they're asking a lot of questions and, and that's, uh, you know, when you've had an auditor for, what, five, five years, and then you've got a new auditor and they have to learn you, and you've got to learn them and what they want. So anyway, that was an interesting conversation.
Thank you so much. Vice Jack.
Thank you, Chair. Real quick, I know we haven't hit nine o'clock in a while, board, so. It's been a long time. Um, the M W B E committee met, uh, Wednesday, this, uh, past Wednesday. Um, so the, uh, state legislation priorities were approved for the twenty twenty-two general assembly session to include funding for our, uh, S B A assistance and youth entrepreneur pilot program. Uh, so with that said, myself and Dr. Whitaker, uh, we approved the pilot program entrepreneurship registration event, which is gonna be December third at Butter Week Golf Course. Uh, the planning team is working on that particular program right now, so that will be sent out to all board members. Um, the solicitations, uh, Board Member Hines, the, uh, zoning, I was gonna mention that it is waiting on committee. Mr. Falk already said that. Other solicitations being developed to be issued, kind of day treatment providers, glass repairs, uh, solicitations to be awarded. We voted on the athletic trainers and the pest control, so that's out of the way. And future solicitations is the custodial equipment repairs, grease trap pumping and cleaning, helmet reconditioning, H V A C and food service repair, nail technician products and supplies, tree trim and removal services. And then finally, an update on our disparity study. Uh, Mr. Falk, um, in our meeting did indicate that it was a delay to the data because the data needed on the vendors from the state that was not released to the consultant firm, Miller Three. Uh, so we have requested that data, so we are awaiting that, um, to finalize our disparity study.
Thank you so much.
And I don't want to neglect, um, Mrs. Schumake and I met with Dr. Bracy and Mrs. Durham, the H R committee, and basically Mrs. Durham has given our report, so there's nothing that I can add to that.
Thanks.
That I can legally add that I didn't.
Correct.
Okay.
Um, yes, our curriculum instruction met about two weeks ago. The bulk of that meeting was about online learning and how many students, um, are there, how many students had come back from edgenuity specifically, back into our buildings because there was the lack of the, the, the one, the teacher aspect of it, that it was all self-driven. Um, but also too, looking at online learning resources for those students that are long-term for COVID or long-term suspension, um, what programs we have for them so that they can keep up with their learning even through their absences.
Thank you so much. Uh, thank you all, thank you all again for being active, actively involved in your committees. Thank you all again for coming on tonight and being, uh, very productive in this meeting. I entertain a motion from Ms. Hines to adjourn.
Yes, proof of approval at eight fifty-eight.
Thanks so much.